Where's Jeff?
Jeff will be late.
Oh, okay.
All right, you guys ready?
Mm-hmm.
Staff ready? Thumbs up. I'm gonna go ahead and call this June 10th, 2025 City Council Workshop Order. Councilmember Jeff Harris may be late, but he should be here for the regular City Council meeting. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, let's start right off with economic development. And who's gonna start? Ms. Hagemeier or Mr. Bach? Ms. Hagemeier?
Yes. Oh, I should've asked about... Oh, there we go. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to take this time to discuss business incentive plans. As I have met with businesses around town, I am reviewing current policies to better spur growth and retain businesses. Mr. Bach and I will be discussing various incentive pathways, and today I wish to discuss Chapter 380 of the Texas Code. As a general definition, Chapter 380 agreements authorize municipalities to offer loans and grants of city funds or services at little or no cost to promote state and local economic development and to stimulate business and commercial activities. And then the county equivalent to this is Chapter 381s. Kerrville's current 380 agreement is 11 years old, and the community needs were very different then than what we're seeing now. The purpose of 380 agreements is to encourage high-quality business, commercial, and manufacturing concerns to remain, expand, and locate within the city in securing affordable housing, encourage projects that create additional revenue for the city, protect and enhance the city's fiscal ability to provide high-quality municipal services for safety, comfort, and enjoyment of city residents. We'll talk a little bit more about what enjoyment of city services means. And then City Council has the sole discretion to approve or deny economic incentives. So in summarizing the current 380 economic development program, and y'all, I'm not too sure if y'all have the current one in front of you, the Resolution 18-24, 2014, the current requirements of the following must be met. A minimum increased taxable value for the city of $200,000, above median hourly wage, or create affordable living. The project may consider a targeted industry or unique contribution to development. Another current ineligible is if a project has a previously pulled permit.
And can I interrupt you for just a minute? I actually asked Dalton about that, to give me an example about a previously pulled permit. And Dalton, would you mind just sharing what you shared with me when you?
Yeah, so just in general, you know, if, and let's just use a box store or something. If there's already a box store in place, they've already pulled a permit, they've already started all of this, that's typically when, under these conditions, that you would not, you know, do a 380.
Like an academy where to start and then later on?
Correct. Yeah, that'd be one example. But yeah, under the policy, under the program, that's, if it's already started, you typically won't do that.
Okay, thank you.
And that is something that I will want us to take into consideration of adjusting within the agreements. So under the current 380 agreement, Council has the authorization to define the following: the number and types of jobs to be retained or created, the financial capacity of the applicant, the amount of the capital project's investment, like how much are they investing into it versus how much, you know, are we willing to incentivize? Market conditions and growth potential for the business activity, numbers and types of housing, and any other factors City Council finds helpful or relevant. So that is quite a broad definition right there.
This is for mostly real estate and commercial or residential, or anything else besides real estate? I mean, $200,000 in taxable property, I guess, could be equipment or something.
Correct. And I think that's part of kind of what we wanted to discuss. So whenever I went on to the, whenever I went on to the Comptroller's website, I pulled up the current 380 agreements that we have that are currently active. And so as you'll see, these are the larger projects that we've done. So Sid Peterson with some infrastructure, James Avery with their employees, land purchase assistance with Killdeer, Lennar has a couple of different ones regarding infrastructure and the TURS that was created. The Landing, that's Thompson Drive Partners, that was for water and wastewater. Fourth on the River, that was to assist them in purchasing the building, which is now Arcadia. And then Bluewood, that summons, a 380 agreement went towards design and construction, and then Shriners University for their athletics for staffing and facilities. So those are just some examples. But what I want to discuss and what we'll get to here in a moment is while we've seen, historically, we've done this for much larger projects, what's that scalability of being able to include smaller businesses and smaller projects? And then just so that y'all are aware, all economic development agreements do have to be reported within 14 days to the Texas Comptroller. So there is a report. So depending on, so the more we do, the more I have to ask finance to submit to Texas Comptroller. Maybe? Okay. So the city must establish a program to implement the incentive. While this program does not intend to imply or suggest that the city is obligated to provide economic incentives, the Council is able to consider each application on a case-by-case basis. And so here are some of the items that I would like Council to consider. And we don't have to have a full, like, this is what I want to see. This is just a general discussion of some items that we can have a conversation on. So additional potential requirements, so what are the requirements for having a 380 agreement? Do we want to adjust that? Adjusting the minimum increased taxable value, so right now it has to be at least $200,000. So do we want to scale that down so that smaller businesses can make an adjustment and they can say, okay, well, I think I can increase my revenue by $50,000 this year? And if they do hit that marker, then they receive some sort of incentive. Above median wage rate, where are we right now and what would that requirement be? How much above that wage rate? So if someone wants to add a new employee or just pay their employees more, then what type of incentive can they give them? Do we want to identify targeted industries? Are there certain industries that we see growth in or that we see we need a shift in that we want to kind of prioritize? Pre-permitting project eligibility. So are there projects maybe that already have a permit, but they maybe haven't started the process? Because maybe there have been some financial barriers, especially with the increase of costs, that we can help them and incentivize them so that they can move forward with their project? Do we want to define enhancement of cities' fiscal ability to provide high-quality municipal services for safety, comfort, and enjoyment of city residents? So do we want to put a definition, a better definition on enjoyment for city residents? Define the numbers and types of jobs retained or created. So historically, it has been 10 or more employees. That has been something, I believe, from the state's end. But some of these small businesses adding just one or two employees is a huge jump financially for them. So is that something that we want to take into consideration? And then also, depending on the size of the company, do we want to require them to provide health insurance to be able to receive some incentives? And then just referencing back to the 2050 Plan, this really aligns with E2 about developing policies and procedures that can spur economic development and that we can work with some of our stakeholders, our stakeholders being our smaller businesses, and reexamining the incentive matrix of which we have with the EIC and with the city. So the city incentives are to be balanced with the public benefit or to set a minimum revenue. So that is something that in the agreements, we will have to say. So if you are looking to add two more employees, what does that look like at X amount, you know, annually for their salary? What does that look like in an incentive? That is one thing that I, that we all heard at the last City Council meeting, is that people ask for a level playing field, and I think that creating the scalability is the best way for a level playing field. Well, I can't, well, we can't turn around and give everyone, you know, half a million dollars in incentives because, you know, River Hills is putting in $4 million. But we can adjust that down to what the business is able to put on the table and then what that incentive looks like. So staff is recommending to create a scalable 380 program to include small businesses and Comments, questions?
Who wants to start? Anybody want to start? I noticed in the resolution you referred to, it talks about staff has developed City of Kerrville Chapter 380 Economic Development Program. Is that available too? Is that on the website? I know that you basically told us the outline of that program.
So right now, those 380 programs, as I understand, are the agreements that we have gone into.
Okay, so...
We have some guidelines that we've been following and doing though.
Correct. And it says that the staff has, this is in 2018, so this was before, any of us were... 2014, I'm sorry. Yeah, 2014, so it's 11 years ago. Does that, and I can ask staff, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's okay.
But I am wanting to know, city staff developed this economic development program, is that something we can find on the website?
Good question. We'll have to get back with you, Mayor.
Okay. That's a key feature of the resolution that you've been referring to. The problem, I think, right now, I, again, not want to put anyone on the spot, but I do want to know, what are we hoping to achieve tonight? I know you've talked about what has been done in the past, and that needs to be revisited, but what is the outcome that we're looking for tonight?
For me, what I am looking to do is to figure out if there is a way that we can take some of these ideas that we've had with larger companies, whether it's someone needs to acquire a building, whether it's someone needs to add staff or a piece of equipment, and figure out if we can roll that into a 380 agreement. So if, per se, someone needs to buy a piece of equipment and it's going to cost them $50,000, but they tell us, okay, I need this piece of equipment, it's $50,000, but I think my revenue for next year can be, can increase by X amount. Well, if they hit that marker, then can we maybe say, okay, then we can give a tax break at $25,000, which was half of the cost of the piece of equipment? You know, stuff like that. Or I need to add two more employees, and I think if I add these two more employees, I can increase my revenue at X percent. Okay, so can we talk about maybe $10,000 per employee, you know, for one year, two years?
But employees don't want to expand the tax base. So is this a requirement by state law that the tax base has to be expanded, or is this something that we decided in 2014?
Something we decided. Yeah, something we decided. So, Mayor, to answer your question, you know, kind of the intent of tonight, twofold. First fold, or first thing is education. You know, to your point of having this stuff on the website, yes, it should be there. We want to educate, you know, with the programs that we have, not just for the businesses, but also for awareness of the community of what these programs are used for and the benefit behind it. 380s are very scalable and they're very flexible. And so we, you know, we, I say we, City Council and the community can really define what those parameters are, if you will, based off of the need of the council priorities or what's happening, you know, this month or this year or whatever. So it's an opportunity to really just educate Council on a tool that we've been using, educate the community on a tool that we've been using, and how do we get creative, again, to continue to use it in a way that benefits the community and City Council's priorities?
All right. Well, the resolution that's been referred to several times specifically mentions a program. And I did look on the website, I don't find it on the website. So if staff developed a working program about the parameters such as it has increased taxable value by $200,000, that document probably exists somewhere.
It does exist. It's on, it's kind of within the sets. And actually, as I click on it right now, which is fun to say, it gives me an error 404 message, so.
Oh.
Yes, it does exist. We'll get you that link.
Let me see if I can interpret what I think I'm hearing. I think I'm hearing is we have an existing program. It needs revision because times have changed, and we want to enable that program to address other businesses besides the James Avery's and the Sid Petersons or Peterson Regional Health, not huge companies, but smaller companies.
Yes, sir.
Who also are the life engine of our economy.
Yes, sir.
So is that what we're seeking tonight? Is consensus for staff to come back with a new 380 economic development program or what?
Possibly to look at some revisions, right? So part of that discussion was this is a 10-year-old policy or 11-year-old policy at this point. And, you know, we all lived through COVID and the changing times that we see now. So are there areas, as Ms. Hagemeier described, that could be implemented that are not presently possible, given the current conditions we have in that policy document? And we will get you that policy document as soon as we can.
It'd be useful.
Yes, sir. No, 100%.
Can you give an example of something that could be done but can't under this particular agreement? Just give me an example.
Well, I thought of one. At our Arcadia meeting, the sporting goods company that was there to talk about the upcoming, new sporting goods company coming in, and he drew to attention that I need help just like they do. So I would love for, you know, I've been here a long time doing business, I would love to have the same kind of interest that a new incoming retailer does. So of course tailored to their size and their needs. Would that be an example?
Yeah, yes. I did take the time to go meet with Mr. Buell, and so we did talk about some of their business plans for expansion, and there's a piece of online equipment that, for online sales. And so we were thinking, okay, what if there is a way for us to help support? So if they implement a new piece of software to allow them to increase their online sales, and if they do increase their online sales by X amount, then can they get a sales tax incentive for however much over, however long, to help offset that cost for getting that piece of software?
Good. Glad to hear that. I wasn't sure exactly what his needs could be.
We talked about a couple, but that one specifically kind of stuck in my mind.
There's probably many other companies out there that have some.
Yeah. Mr. Bach said someone had come to him and said that they need, they, I can't remember what type of company, they need a second truck. So that's a piece of equipment. So if we can assist someone who needs another truck so that they can do more business, which means more sales tax, you know, and then we can help them offset that cost.
I'm sorry, I caught us off guard. The 380 policy is attached, it's so the resolution's the first two pages, and then the 380 policy is the subsequent four pages after that.
It's on the border.
Yes, sir.
One through four.
Yes, that is where I got those requirements versus the requirements versus the preferred. So the biggest one is that taxable value of $200,000. So I think reducing that down or maybe making tiers. So if you're going to do between this, 50,000, $10,000 to $50,000, or $50,000 to $100,000, you know, we can do different tiers depending on how many employees you want to include. So one to two, two to four, you know, we can keep, that is all, those are all scenarios that we can discuss. And I definitely intend this to not be our final discussion. I just wanted to start with Chapter 380 since that was the one kind of on everyone's, on the front of everyone's mind. Two weeks from now, I'll do a workshop on Chapter 312s. And then if no one else has any other questions, Mr. Bach will give a presentation.
We still have questions. We still have questions. Brenda, did you want to just say something a little ago?
No, no, no. Not yet.
My concern is this. We're talking about, thank you for finding that. I don't know how, didn't come up all ago, and I didn't read it before the meeting, so now I'm prepared to really discuss it. But here's my concern. It feels like if we're going to expand a program that was started in 2014, we need to give you all some parameters of what we expect, what we hope for. Ms. Hagemeier has listed some things, but I think it behooves the Council to also come up with things that they think would be useful. But that's compounded because we don't know the law behind Chapter 380. And you do. Is there some way we could have a brief on that? Not tonight, but in written form at a later time, so we'll know what the parameters are, what the rules of the road for Chapter 380 are.
Let me give you a prelude to that, too, real quick. So I get calls periodically, people come into my office, I'm invited to a meeting, and people in the community, business owners, they don't know, they don't know what they want, other than they want some help from the city. And so they'll ask, EIC is pretty well-known, and they'll ask about EIC. EIC is very constrained by state law. There's seven, basically seven different types of projects. And so we'll run through those with them, and I would say the vast majority of the time, they don't match up. The beauty of a 380 agreement, which is, I think Ms. Hagemeier referred to this toolbox of economic development tools, is very broad. And the state says, hey, cities, you can do this if there's a public purpose involved, you just got to, you have to have a program. And so that's why that program document was adopted by Council in 2014. And yes, you all ought to look at that and consider kind of what you're hearing from staff and how you perhaps want to tweak that program to probably catch some of these other requests that can't be funded by 4B funds, but can be funded by 380 funds, which are it's a general fund. So again, it's very much broader than 4B funds.
What the very short summary says here, it's loans and grants of city funds. Loans, grants at little or no cost. Loans, of course, have to be paid back, but grants, I guess, do not. Am I correct?
Correct, in general.
A good example of a grant would be, so Killdeer's agreement with the city. So that, you know, they meet these benchmarks over the years, and that loan decreases over time, and provided they hit their benchmarks, it will become a grant. But if they don't, then it's a loan that has to have clawbacks and repayments.
I noticed that there was, this program has a clever paragraph M, and such other provisions as the City Council deals with.
I like that.
Look, go ahead, please.
If I may, the other thing, too, as y'all are working through kind of your parameters, you know, yes, the understanding of the law behind the 380 is going to be beneficial, you know, same thing with the 312s and other incentives. But I would definitely encourage Council, think about all the parameters that y'all could possibly think of and write them down. Because what's great about it is if it doesn't fit under a 380, it could fit under a 312. It could fit under another program that as economic development, as Kelly and Todd work through the series, if you will, of these incentives, there could be another place for those incentives that could be beneficial for y'all as well.
Well, this show we put on, on the second and fourth Tuesdays, is a very limited amount of time. And so I'm always going to want to know, what are we expecting to accomplish with this limited amount of time? And I appreciate your comments, but I would have appreciated more from other staff, what exactly we're trying to accomplish tonight.
I just have one question.
Please go.
So as you do your responsibilities, your duties, talking to the folks out in the community, you may learn things we don't know. So I could certainly write those down like Dalton suggested. Like, I would say is $50,000 a better number than $200,000? Or what's your reading on what you're hearing from the community? So I would really lean on you a lot as well, since you're the eyes and ears of what's out there, what the needs are, and try to better understand what they are. Because I talk to a select group of people for the most part, and you take the broad picture. So I'm open. I'm not, I'll make my comments, but I may be off my bit, so.
And that brings up another thing. What's the yardstick? When you say $200,000, it increased tax value, but Ms. Hagemeier's mentioning, well, increase, a business may say this, will increase my operating income by such amount. What's the yardstick? Is it income? Is it taxable revenues? By what measure do we, by what yardstick do we measure success? And that's not clear with this discussion either.
Has to have a public benefit, right? So taxable property, sales tax, you know, those kind of metrics that the city, the citizens would receive that benefit.
Specific.
Yes, sir.
Yardsticks, or we won't know what success looks like. All right. I'm sorry to belabor the point. It's not that this council is so blatantly important, it's just our time together is limited. And if we're going to meet, I would like us to achieve something. Would it be helpful for this section of? Do you have something to say?
No, I was looking at you several times.
Oh, you looked at her. Anyway.
You can't help it.
I think it's the perfect place for the staff to give us some suggestions. We can be thinking about things in the meantime, and they've got some things already in their minds. So I think $200,000 seems like a too big a number, and $10,000 or $25,000 might be too small. But we have to think a little bit about what, you know, the parameters. But, you know, what can fit with the law? And apparently, it's pretty wide open, so I'm very much in favor of reducing the size requirements, and we, you know, we might still be looking for a similar kind of payback somehow with an increase in sales tax and property tax or something, you know, we're not just paying an amount or...
It sounds like it'll be case by case.
Right, right. And that's fine. But if we get it down too small, or we get too many, and it's going to be too... I mean, we want to help small businesses, but 10,000 or 25,000 anymore.
We can incentivize ourselves right into the poorhouse here.
Well, 10,000 to 25,000 is not, you know, peanuts anymore, unfortunately, you know, for a business.
Yeah.
So, okay, so anyway, my suggestion is, let's hear back some recommendations, and we can massage it as we go.
I think there's consensus for that, don't you?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions at this point, because I've always been of the opinion that incentives should go towards the huge needs that we have that would...
help get us where we need to go by providing an incentive and not just giving it out like candy. And so I, I.
It needs to be a payback of some kind. It needs to, it needs to somehow create more tax base or something, you know.
You know, permit fees and all of that stuff, that's still, you know, that's, that's revenue for the city that we're losing out on. And we need to be careful about too many incentives because it does affect our bottom line as a city.
I, I like something else you said, that we need to have our goals defined, cities' goals defined in the program.
Yes.
Okay.
More chicken places.
Lot more chicken.
Y'all stop eating chicken and they'll stop bringing chicken places, all right?
So do we have a consensus then on, based on everyone's comment? Are we clear as mud to everyone here? All right, Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Todd Bach with Kerr EDC. And what I'm just, I'm here in support of, of Kelly's ask and staff's ask to look into what we currently have offering as the city and as a county as far as economic development incentives. The, the very first question you'll find when you sit down with a prospect or a local business is, what do you have for me? Right? And the answer to that back should be, what do you have for us? You know, just like you had alluded to. So setting that bar as to what you expect in a gain at the end of that incentive is just as important as setting the incentive. And to, and to echo Mike, you know, doing the same thing, Mike, you sit down and you, you look under the EIC umbrella and it's so limited. And you're sitting, talking to a new plumbing startup company that needs $15,000 worth of equipment. And they're local, they've lived here, they've grown up here, and it's a dream of theirs. And they just come to ask, do I qualify for something? Here are my needs, what do I, what do you have that we qualify for? So what I wanted to show is, is supporting Kelly in the ask, and obviously the ask of, of the council and the council directive of what you want to see out of the incentive for then your economic development team to be able to go and, and offer that in those settings. I'm just going to run through this real quick. This is just kind of a, a look at a lot of different economic development tools, some that we would currently say we have just because they're with the state. And Teresa and Kelly have put this together. And if you'll, you'll go across the top, the incentive tool, obviously, is the name of the tool, the purpose of the tool, the benefit of the tool, and who actually funds it and manages that process. And there's a couple of examples of the first few incentives that the city of Kerrville and/or Kerr County has participated in to, to help develop some of our local new business partners. And to Kelly's point, as you go through, when you can look at these, a lot of these aren't tailored to the local small business. Right? They're, they're, they're used a lot of times into attracting a new business or to take an existing larger business and help them grow and expand, which we want to continue to do as well. Right? That's, that's part of our responsibility in economic development is take the local business retention and expansion programs and offer them incentives, obviously, if the city's gain is greater than that of the incentive, you know? But these are just some examples. So there, there are quite a few out there, but not very many that are tailored, is convenient for a city to actually mold into what they need as a 380 itself. This, again, is just another slide. If you'll look at, at some of the, you know, like a foreign trade zone, right? Reduces custom duties and taxes, enhances global competitiveness if we were to have a company locally that were in the foreign trade market. And again, if you'll look where that incentive comes from, it requires a federal approval. But the city of Kerrville's ED manager as a local lead and a Kerr EDC as support. Those type of incentives that you'll see listed there too are not coming from your city's revenue or from your city's funds. They are just applications and grants that are provided on the federal and the state level. We currently, we'll use the opportunity zone. The opportunity zone is a federal program. We currently have an opportunity zone here in Kerrville. And I have actually received requests in my short time with Kerr EDC is to find them properties within the opportunity zone. And having the zone is actually available online, you can actually see it. And then we go through and we've identified and got with a few brokers and, and tried to identify them some properties that they could actually look at bringing a business in. And then it's a capital gains tax, I believe, at the end of the day, from reinvesting in an opportunity zone. Has nothing to do with, with, it's a federal program, and, and it takes the city just to initiate that. Couple of the others, one of the others that we have looked at too, and I know Kelly has visited with, you know, there's a fast track permitting process. Some of the cities, Kelly and I listened to a presentation by a city that they use that. They use that specifically and only for a certain amount of business and only for a few businesses that qualify. And they have a special program. And if you qualify for that program, and the key there is qualifying, right? It goes back to that M section. If you qualify, well, you'll determine what those qualifications are and if they do or if they do not. But it's a way also to add incentives at a, not a no cost. There's no such thing as no cost, but at a, at a reduced cost. But, but it gives the impression that you are a very aggressive city looking to help grow business. Any questions or comments on, on any of the other tools? And, and these tools, some of these, so we get asked, right? You know, like, what do you have available? Well, the simple thing to that is there's, everything should be on a case by case basis. Everything should be, you know, there's, you'll have some boxes to check, but at the end of the day, you make the decisions on what you would like to incentivize and what you don't want to. What we currently don't have, and a roadblock that I know Kelly's run into, is just that small, our local small business looking for an expansion of various sizes, whether it be a, a building expansion onto their property, whether it be equipment. The other day, I, I had a prospect contact me just looking within the area, and he sent me his website. Well, when I got to the bottom of his website, he's looking at relocating a business here. When I got to the bottom of his website, his website was provided by that local economic development corporation. Just another small, hey, you qualify for a website if, and they helped, they helped him fund that website that he had. That was his direct, he's from out of town, but that was his direct link into calling Kerr EDC is because he had had assistant with his business where he currently is. Simple as a website. So a lot of different things are out there. Just know that, that anything we can do to help and, and with the discussions, Kerr EDC will be there. We also have a great resource. Teresa Metcalf is on retainer with Kerr EDC, and she lives and breathes this. This is, this is her, this is her world too. So we have her for any, any resources that we need. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bach?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. McKee?
No.
Me at all?
Oh, you sure can't.
Mayor, a couple of things if, if I may. Thank you, Todd and Kelly, for presenting it. You know, a couple of things on this one that I wanted to kind of just reemphasize a little bit. In that far column, it really showed kind of the different roles that, you know, EDC plays, that the economic development manager plays, how the city plays a part and the city council plays a part. And I think that was really important to, you know, to highlight on there is, there's a lot of different programs, a lot of different things, that each one plays a certain role. And Kelly and Todd are really kind of showing that over the past month and a half of how that is working and collaborating together between the two entities or the multiple entities to make sure that there's a seamless fit on, on what it is. The other thing on the incentive side, because there's obviously a lot of information that we can go through, we can make a whole series about this and still never touch everything. Sometimes these incentives, and I hate using the word public-private partnerships, but I'm going to, because it's going to trigger somebody in the audience. But the public-private partnership sometimes is just a simple fact of getting them into the door and being able to negotiate with them. Because the way, we all know the state does amazing things for cities. And they're continuing to support cities on a daily basis, right? But as that power continues to get stripped away, such as, as facades, right? Materials using for, you know, homes or using for businesses. Cities are limited on, on certain things. Or there are certain requirements that, or certain restrictions that we cannot impose on, on properties. Sometimes by offering that little bit of incentive, even if it's minor, $10,000 or some type of performance, could enter into a development agreement which could then lay a foundation for us to negotiate, says, look, we want this type of material, or we want this type of facade, or we want this type of, whatever that may be, that this ask, it's that give and take now versus them just being able to do it. So sometimes it can just open that door to be able to have that conversation and be able to offer that incentive or that partnership to be able to, to change the course of, of something that was coming in. But just kind of food for thought.
Go ahead, please.
So if I wanted to get the word out that this is, you can go to our website and you can get in touch with someone for this information, is that available, like electronically? Or like, if they just went to our Kerrville website, could they go to a section in it for a meeting with you to find out how they could possibly, you know, have some of these incentives? I mean, I should probably try that myself.
Well, on, on the, on the Kerr EDC website, we have just finished up, I believe, our latest edits of our pages, we're reworking our website. That's one of the first, one of the first that we did was list the incentives. And that's, and that's, that's the very first thing. Got a request for information this week, a couple of them actually. And one of the first things they ask is, what are your local and state? Because they're not all from Texas, right? So you can't assume that they know all of the Texas options that are available as far as incentives. So we have that listed on the KE, KEDC website to, to give an idea as to what you have. Now, the key is, goes back to what Dalton and everybody's been saying, is what's that local? Right? And, and being able to have a way to identify that specifically with parameters and guardrails and everything that the city wants to have is, is really key. And again, it starts that, it just starts that dialogue. It starts, starts those conversations.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for, thank you. All right. Thank you to both Mr. Bach and Ms. Hegemeyer. We appreciate not only your presentation tonight, but the work you're doing for our community. Thank you very much. Let's move on to 2B, reuse water rate presentation. Rodriguez?
Hello, how are y'all today? Alrighty, so in light of the upcoming fiscal year '26 Water Fund Budget Workshop on Tuesday, I'm here to talk to you today about, share our analysis of the reclaimed water system, specifically its cost and the ideas we have for adjustments that we can make to allow the system to better support the overall water sewer fund, hopefully. You may hear me say reclaimed, reused, or recycled water. It's all interchangeable and means the same thing. So we know the reuse system has always been a hot topic in our community. But the city of Kerrville has always been at the forefront of the long-range planning and trying to mitigate, you know, the shortage, the scarcity of water because of population growth or drought situations. So it does allow us to keep our drinking water for drinking, and we can use the non-drinking water for other purposes such as the irrigation and construction, those things. We can save that surface and groundwater. But though all those benefits are great and fine, it is a nice cost to us to keep the system up and running. So we wanted to share with you just what we found. Just to reiterate, y'all know we have a retention pond out on Loop 534. And basically, it's wastewater that's treated, that's recirculated back into the water distribu, reclaimed water distribution system, sent out to irrigate. And sometimes we have discharged back to eligible water sources if we don't need that. It has a storage capacity of about 90 million gallons. The city is responsible for operating the distribution lines, the distribution pump station, and then ensuring that the customers on the other end are following procedures as keeping their storage facilities up and running and their usage. So back in, we began the design and construction of the reclaimed retention pond back in 2015, and it was finalized and completed in 2020. And the councils before you, they voted on this project and voted on the funding for this project also. So the city allocated approximately $8,350,000 in 2016 bond series monies. And then we got a loan for seven and a half million from K-Pub. And then EIC contributed 3 million of that. We had some undesignated funds from the water sewer category. And then we had some old unused bond dollars that we went ahead and used up for the water system to complete that $21.7 million project. Now, of course, with the after effects of bonds, you have annual payments. So right now on the books, we have 10 years remaining on that 2016 debt series for approximately $634,000 a year. And then the K-Pub loan has another four years on it at approximately $1.1 million a year. But the city was smart. When we finished this project, we kind of put into a tracking mechanism so that we can monitor the annual operating costs for this facility. And over there to the right is the box for that breakdown. So specific chemicals, electricity for, to run the pumps and the aerators and all the moving parts of the system. Sometimes we have small repairs we have to make and just regular system maintenance, approximately $74,000 a year. So that with the annual debt service payments, approximately $1.8 million a year for the system to operate. And that's just the hard cost. We have obviously labor and everything else that goes into that. Okay. So we have been looking at our current reclaimed water customers. So we have right now nine reused customers on our system. And we also have a variable flux of customers that go out to the water reclamation plant to pick up bulk reuse, reused water loads. They are on a different fee schedule, and they're not really part of this analysis, but they are users of the reclaimed system. Of those nine accounts, the gray highlighted ones are the ones that the city currently has contracts with. And over to the right are some highlights of those contracts. So each of these contracts are on 15- and 20-year terms with five-year auto renewals on those. Each contract has its defined property service area, so specific, specifically where that reused water will be used on that property. We did have to get a couple of easements on some of the properties, specifically just for equipment and piping, just to get in there and run the system to where it needs to be. Every contract has requirements of storage facilities, you know, ponds on their properties to hold that water. And that water is pumped daily to those to stay at the levels they need. And the city has committed, each of those contracts specifically for those account holders, a X amount of gallons per day that we would provide them. And then the main focus here is the, most of these contracts had locked-in rates for the first seven years. So now that we are in 2025, that first seven years is now up. And we wanted to look at what we can do to align this classification of customers better to support the overall fund.
I have a question before we go to the next slide.
Yes, sir.
Go back to the last slide.
Okay.
You say the, the highlighted ones are the ones with whom we have contracts.
Yes, still active.
But we don't have contracts with KISD or Kerr County?
Those are expired.
For KISD, one has expired. We're working with them to renew. And the county has an animal control center that, they, they use almost no water, it's very little, just for the shelter out there. And so as, as long as I've been here, I've, I've never been aware that we've had a contract with them. They were, they were pre-existing before the, the current pond.
Yes.
Would KISD be able to use this not only at Tybee High School, but now that there's a middle school nearby? Would, would any irrigation be possible at the middle school?
They, right, they, the new middle school has turf, and so there was no need for it, and they didn't want to extend it up the hill. And so they didn't really, we asked them when they came on, said, hey, do y'all have any need for this? Though they have a lot of grass out there, they said, no, they're going to do a turf field and, and go that route.
I know they have a turf field, but they also have landscaping.
Yes, sir.
But they're not using it for landscaping.
They're not using it for landscaping. You do have to upgrade that agreement with them. I just, they actually just got a new athletic director, I think he's the director. He's, he's also over the irrigation. And they have, their pumps haven't been in, in working order to, to use as much water as they would like to use. He's just getting those upgraded now. And so he, as of two or three weeks ago, when I talked to him last, they're going, we're going to see a different amount of usage in their use in the very future.
Is it safe to assume that the high school and possibly the middle school are currently using potable water, potable water to, to irrigate their landscaping?
Yes, I would, I wouldn't know where else they would get the water from.
Thank you for letting me ask about the contracts.
Yes, sir.
One, one more point on that. So if, if they do use it anywhere, each one of these contracts, they cite where they can use, only they can use it, and the state says this is where we agree to allow them to use reuse water. So every time they alter the location, they got to update that and update the contract with us as well, so.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. All right, so looking at our reclaimed consumption and the revenues that it generates currently. So we took a look at the past five years for each one of these account holders to determine their average consumptions and the revenues specifically. And for illustration purposes, we're just going to look at their actual last 12 months that we have to just depict what we're trying to show here. So 259.9 million gallons a year we have billed out for the last 12 months for reclaimed water in this class. And the monthly average equates to approximately 21.6 million gallons, and that in turn produces $178,000 in revenue. The utility billing department, they do bill on a variable rate structure. So basically, you have a base charge and a volumetric rate charge. And so right now, the current rate for most of the customers is at 75 cents per thousand gallons. There's two contracts that have some parameters set in it, and we cannot increase more than 2% per year, so they're at 65 cents at the moment. But as you can see, the 178,000 does not line up anywhere near the 1.8 million dollars it costs per year to operate this system. So we went through this whole exercise. We're trying to figure out the best plan of action to get there. And I've talked with Public Works, obviously, several times and kind of read a lot of publishings and things. And the return on investment is not going to be a financial one for, for these types of systems, as it's stated in the publications I read, as well as those that were here when the project took off and, and landed. We already knew that upfront. The savings is going to be to the potable water system. That, that is the water that we're saving and not having to use on things that could be reclaimed. Regardless of that large gap we have to fill, we got to do something. So what we did first was obviously-
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt now.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go back to the last slide, please?
Yes, sir.
So if KISD does not have a valid contract right now, am I understanding that they are not using their 637,200 gallons of water?
They're still using it. They're still tied in.
Potable water.
Oh, that says reclaimed.
It's reclaimed.
That's in millions of gallons, right?
Yes, sir.
So, so those are 600 million gallons of water. Yes, they, they are still using it. We, we just found, we- We just noticed the contract when Trina was going through her, through her processes and said, no, this one's, this one's no good anymore. We need to update with them. And so we've contacted them. What we're proposing and what she'll get to here in her presentation is, is how do we set that rate? And that's a little bit of what we're, what we're hearing tonight from y'all is how do we move forward with that? What's the council's pleasure on, on what is that rate going to be? And that will dictate how we, how we're able to move forward with their contract.
The reason I asked is I've had other organizations that are already under contract with us asking for more water. So if they're not going to use water-
It'd be a good thing to contemplate as well, a take-or-pay contract, and we've kind of done that a little bit with River Hills. We don't want to go under contract with people that aren't using the water, right? And so either, either you use it or you pay us for it, either one. Because if, we're, we're still experiencing the cost, and we're, we're losing the benefit if you don't use it, we can't bring on another customer. And so we're, as she's evaluating this, we're looking at all these different options, and, and we're here tonight to kind of hear y'all's input. So that's a good, good note that we'll take back from her.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
All right, so we started out by benchmarking other cities and kind of see how they line up their, their system and how they sell reclaimed water. And this is a tough task because every city does it differently. Their needs are different than our needs, but we find that with other things also. As you can see here on this chart, there's a, a mix of flat and volumetric rates, schedules. And if we couldn't find the exact base charge on some of these, we kind of plugged in what their six and eight-inch meter base charge costs were. That is what most of our customers are on for these larger volume ones. Curville's figures are not calculated here in, in this mix. We kind of just wanted to see exactly how other cities were lining out. But as you can see, the average base charge is around $248 a month, and that's off top without any water consumption at all. The median is about $145 a month. And on the tiers there, per 1,000 gallons, averaged $2.67, and the median is $2.33. But you've heard this from us in finance before, where we're trying to at least start transitioning our rates to the industry arena somewhere, you know? So we feel like we're super behind, as you can see, and we just, we're trying to get there. All right, so how can we get there here on our base charge? This is kind of where we've mapped out, and this is just, stay with me, because this is how we're working through it. So we looked at basically, what is that annual operating cost for that, that, the chemicals, electricity, stuff, just the overhead to keep that pond running? $74,000 a year. So if we take that by month, how we bill, that would be $6,100 a year we would need to recover in base charges alone. But we only have nine accounts to divide that up between. So that would be $685 off top before they touched a gallon of water. So I was like, that's kind of high. We have some accounts that only use 200 overall. So we looked at possibly, what, what would a third of that operational cost per year be? $25,000. You can see the breakdown, 2,055 in base charges a, a month, and with the nine accounts, that equates to $228 for each account. Said, okay, that looks better. It's more in line with what the average and median is. We did one step further and what, what, see what the fourth would look like. That brings it down to $171 a month per account. So that was, it's kind of getting us there. Okay, so right here on this is a, a model, the, over on the left is the actual monthly average gallons per account. And kind of divided it up to see what a tiered schedule would look like, what, what categories, where would you break those tiers off at? So kind of landed at zero to a million gallons, because these are higher volume customers. And you can see how they, they pan out, zero to a million, a million to 6 million, and then 6 million plus. And this is, this is monthly average pretty much regularly on spot. We've compared it to the five-year average, and that's right where they're at. So some of the benefits and things to consider with the volumetric tiers, it does line up to what our existing potable irrigation category has. We have three tiers in that potable irrigation category. This would, that would line up with that. It does mirror our existing water structure, so if, the more water they use, the higher their tiered rates would be. However, we've got to be careful with that, because we're trying to encourage them to use reclaimed water, so you don't want to punish them for using more water. Kind of work that out here on the next slide to, to caveat that. And then on the flat rates, obviously, it'd be more simple and predictable for the city as well as the customers. They know what their average is. They can calculate it out by the rate per thousand and set their, their, their budget. Same thing for the city. We can predict how to budget those revenues year over year. There is a potential revenue loss because of inequality issues. Basically, if they are, have the 11 million gallon customer being charged the same amount as the 200,000 gallon customer, then, you know, there could be some, some things there we can work on. But these are just considerations of where we want to go and how we want to get there. Okay, so next slide is the volumetric rates. So we started leaning towards how we can get closer to what the industry average and median were. So off top, we were like, we may need to jump just to doubling our rate. At 75 cents per thousand, $1.50 would get us closer to that, that area. And so we started out with that. As you can see, this is not only looking at today, but down the line, where we want to go with these revenues and the implications of the customer. So we built out a four-year plan, temporary. And on the first tier, from the first tier to the second tier is the 25% jump, $1.50 to $1.88. And then that last tier, because of the inequality issues, we reduced that jump to 15%. So the light blue boxes would be the total revenues for the year, year over year of what we could look at for the volumetric rate schedule, a tiered rate schedule. Okay, and then the flat rates, what that would do. We still took the same 2.9 million gallons that is used every year and just plugged in what it would be at the flat rates. And on the last chart, as well as this one, I forgot to notate that you have $1.50 for the, the regular customers or the customers that are not on contracts, and then you have the contracted amount for those that I can't move the needle too far on their, their tiered rates. So this is what a flat rate, next four years would look like. Now, on the flat rates, because it is a flat rate, we did a higher base charge on this, on this plan, rather, we took the second, I'm sorry, the first base charge, the third of the overall operating cost to plug in for the base charges. And the other one, we plugged in just the hun, the, the second option, $171. A little bit less because the rates are a little bit higher, and then a little bit higher because the rates are a little bit less. Is any of that, any questions on any of that?
Our number is very fast.
One, one question. So the contracted rate year one is 66 cents.
For those customers that are still on contracts, yes.
So are you going, that means it looked like River Hill would go up from-
Two percent.
-65, and Comanche Trace is going to go from 75 down to 66?
No, Comanche Trace's contract rate schedule is expired, so they will fall into the category of the other reclaimed customers, whatever we decide on.
Thank you.
Okay.
How much does it cost for the potable water? I mean, if we're saying, I mean, how much?
I don't have the exact, but I want to say it was like .004 cents per gallon.
I think it's right around $3,000 for potable water, and so-
Oh, for the production?
Yeah, and so it, this is, you're getting a lot more water for, than what you're getting on the potable side, a lot better rate.
I'm sorry, so?
I think it's, is it, what's our flow rate? What's the-
Our irrigation customers, we have them categorized as residential, commercial irrigation. I would say these more line up with irrigation customers. I want to say they start at $4.60 per thousand. But those, the tiers are a lot smaller. It's zero to 15,000, 15,000 to 25,000, and 25,000 plus. So they're, they're not, obviously, the volume is not as large, so.
So we use a tiered rate on, on our water, on the potable water side.
For irrigation, the lowest charge is $4?
Yeah, it's starting, $3 goes up to $6 per thousand, $6.15 last time I looked, but it's been a little while. They're pulling up the fee schedule, because there's four or five different tiers, so we don't have them all committed to memory and what their trigger points are.
Well, I just kind of get an idea, you know, how much savings and what.
Yes, sir.
This is just a touch point.
Okay, so basically, we, once we decided on what we would be able to do with all these scenarios, we plugged them into our working five-year forecast that we use for almost everything as far as budgeting. And this over here, this chart on the right, basically it gives you the next five years, or this year we're in, it gives you a five-year look of what all the revenues in the water sewer fund look like, and then what the net position would be for the fund if we were to just increase this reclaimed water a little bit. So what we did was plugged in the flat rate category of 376,000 on year one. We actually did a haircut of approximately 10% on the consumption, was, which is about 25 million gallons, and plugged that in at 337,000 rather than 376,000. So down in the, the second red line down there, the change in net position, that would increase our surplus on the water sewer fund side year over year by those amounts. So of course, this helps us build surplus for the future infrastructure replacements we'll have. I talked with water distribution, and they didn't put in all of these meters and valve boxes and everything out there. I think the contractor did. But a meter alone for an eight or 10, or six or eight-inch meter is approximately $10,000 to $12,000 today. Valve boxes and all that, I think it, the cost was probably about $25,000. So now that all this infrastructure is put in, it is now the city's responsibility to fix those breaks and, and things later on down the line. So that is on us. So we definitely have to plan and, and plug in some stuff for that, some monies for that. This, of course, often, obviously will alleviate the burden on the rest of the rate payers, which is the water and sewer customers that we look at all the time, because it does affect most of our population. And if I have a surplus now, maybe I can decrease those water and sewer rates for the regular domestic customers. Who knows? But this is just kind of where we're at, and we're just plugging down the line, see what the best fit would be for the customers, the citizens, and obviously what we need to conquer. We're just trying to mark ideas and our financial plans for the future and see where we're going. Julie, I found the rates for irrigation customers. The first tier is $5.18, second tier is 708, and the third tier is 996. Oh, I'm way off.
What was that now?
518, 708, and 996, and then these-
What, what are these?
The irrigation customers? You were asking with the-
One, two, and, and year by year, this is another slide. So you can provide these slides to us so we can digest these after-
Definitely.
Like, you said it was a little, a small increase, and I did the math, and I know it's, is that 11%?
On the flat, these are the-
On the other slide, when you said the five-year forecast, where I just took the 4,008,10 and divided it by 4,109, and I don't know, is that 11%? You said it was a small increase, so I don't, I was just curious. Is that right? Right number?
Are you looking at the fund balance of-
Looking at the ending, beginning fund balance, right. I just took that column, I, that line, sorry.
So we're looking at, the red line up top is the reused water that's plugged in. So right now, a fiscal year 25 budget for reclaimed water revenue is 175,000. And if we were able to increase that up to 337,000, that would generate a surplus down there on the bottom of that same column.
Okay, I see it, yeah.
Of 170,000.
Wouldn't be a surplus, it'd just be less of a deficit.
Yeah, to the whole fund, it's less of, it's a surplus, right. You budget for the same revenue, same expenses.
Can't get enough for surplus.
One of the earliest slides suggested that the K-Pub indebtedness has about five more years to run, and the certificate of obligation bonds have about 10 more years to run. Is that about right?
Correct.
Once those bonds are paid, and once the loan to K-Pub is paid, our annual costs will go down. Our, our cash required will go down. Has that been plugged into your numbers?
We have not gone out that far, no, sir, it has not. But I can extend that.
Doesn't need to be, I just was asking. All right, any other questions for Ms. Rodriguez?
It will definitely, yeah, once that's paid off, our debt capacity will open up. I know that's-
The problem is that by that time, the pumps will be 25, 30 years old, and all sorts of infrastructure problems will start to spring up, I would imagine. Any other questions? Specifically, anybody? I'll go ahead and neglect a call, Mr. McKinney.
Oh, clears throat several times.
Sorry, I missed that.
You can watch it there. All right, any other questions?
It'll come back next week at the budget workshop. We probably won't go in as much detail, but-
Thank you.
Definitely what we would like to propose to you.
Any other comments or questions?
You're proposing the flat rate?
I was just showing example of what it would be if it was just the flat rate.
So you're not really proposing any of those, it's just-
Not today.
Okay, next week then?
Yes.
All right, we have no reason to go into executive session. And so I'm going to call, I'm going to close this workshop at 5:09.